Okay. Let's call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, January 19th. And Denise, if you would like to make this announcement first.
The city council meeting can be viewed on Catalina Broadband, which is Channel 3. It's streaming live on the cityofavalon.com-meetings. It's on facebook.com/cityofavalonofficial. And you can submit ecomments on the following link, which is avalon.granicousideas.com. And you click on the Meeting tab and then post your comment for the January 19, 2021 meeting.
Thank you. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we could please have a few moments of silence for Juanita, Juanita Ocampo and Sarah Lockler. And let us pray for a peaceful inauguration day throughout our nation. And the roll call, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
She's on mute.
Councilmember Ponce.
Well, we know they're here. What's up? We can't hear you. You can't hear us. The releases.
They're all... Councilmember Lavelle.
Oh, here comes Devon Hart. Was she the one that's supposed to monitor that?
We're going to do roll call now. Councilmember De La Rosa. Can anybody up on the Zoom hear me?
And they can't hear me talk either then, huh? Can you hear me, Cindy? Can you hear me, Cindy? Well, it was going to be a quick meeting. Look how patient they are. Somebody should text Cindy. Or email her. She's on her phone or on her computer. None of them are saying what's going on.
It's all ready? Wow, thank you. Can I have some water?
He's got his lunch.
Scott, you're not on mute.
Dinner arrived early today.
That's okay.
Can you hear us, Cindy? No, they can just talk to themselves.
Okay, I guess there's an issue going on, guys.
Sounds like it.
Community can hear Annie, but they can't hear us.
Okay, because we just tried to do the roll call.
I think Jordan's gone, if they want to check with him.
Can hear Annie, not others can hear Scott.
Okay.
Can they hear us now, or maybe it's still on delay? Scott, are you dialed in by phone, or are you on the regular?
I'm just on my computer audio.
Can tell Jordan's gone.
Ah, I think it's always technology, but with the wind, I'm pretty sure it's the wind. Matt's doing a great job.
That is just great.
He's fantastic. But I was, we, I have a window in my new office world, and so noticing just how much the wind is picking up right now. I tend to blame it on the wind.
See, Cindy, if I was over there, we, you know, I'd, I'd be there for a couple days with the wind kicking up.
Stuck, you'd be stuck.
I'd be on the, you know, I'd be loving it.
Right?
I remember one time I got stuck there, not stuck, but it was a whole week I was there. In my, in my first year as city attorney.
I guess they can hear, the community can hear both. On Facebook, they can hear both sides.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, look, that's weird, her little screen when she leaves.
That doesn't help if we can't hear them, right?
Right.
Yeah, Yoli's telling me that she can hear me quite clearly.
Yeah, so it's just a matter of internally the city connecting us. Everyone can hear both sides.
Well, then tell the community for you to do the roll call. Tell them you're here.
Can you guys hear my background noise? We were trying to test out how...
Yeah.
Okay.
So people could be watching Scott eating his dinner right now? Can you hear me? Council, can you hear me? Oh, okay.
Yes, yes.
Nice to meet you all. So I'm talking in, oh, there's Cindy there. I'm talking into a cell phone. And Denise, I think is going to be talking into a cell phone also. So Jonathan Foster, where are you? Oh, you're muted. You're muted.
There we go. I am in Irvine tonight.
Oh, I like the Capitol building behind you. Kind of got us confused. Can't hear you, Scott. You're on your two.
Members of the public can hear us, so we can proceed.
Yeah, we're just waiting with Denise right now. Michael is giving her instruction. Scott, we can see you eating.
Trying to eat off camera, I'm sorry.
You're not, but you're not off camera.
My wife surprised me. She, she gave me dinner before the meeting, and she, she usually waits till after.
Okay, I just got a note said, there's a big echo on me.
But you're such a person.
Oh, you're so sweet. Maybe I'll go away from the mic run tight and then it won't echo. Oh, since you gave me the cell phone, I guess you can't hear me. Oh, well. We're just going to have to muddle through this one. Okay, so we're ready for roll call? No, not quite.
Annie, my message is that your echo is gone.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Could you let you in?
Oh, no!
Something is not on mute. What was that? Cute. Okay, we're good. Okay, Denise. Can you hear Denise? No. I'm going to sit up here with me. Okay, we're ready. Oh, boy.
I suggest everyone mute themselves who's not talking.
Yeah, no, yesterday. Oh, I don't need to talk to these at all, do I? Oh, okay. Ready for roll call?
Okay. Councilmember De La Rosa. Councilmember Lavelle. Is it? Councilmember...
I'm, I'm assuming you're saying Michael, but here, I can't hear.
Michael, should I just stand there? Should I just stand there at the podium? Try this thing. Will they stand up there too? Denise, I can hear you on this.
Denise, why don't we have everyone log down?
This is Matt here. What we're going to do is shut down the meeting and restart everything to see if I can't solve the problem that way. Apologize for the technical difficulties on my end. So I'm going to close the meeting and then we'll restart it, and then hopefully we can solve the problem in the restart. I've got Jordan's instructions, so I'm going to go word for word again, so apologize.
No worries.
...
audited financials.
Denise, before we start, may I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to let everyone know, as well as the mayor, I will need to log off at 6:00. I know this wasn't planned, but I will have to log off at 6:00 for personal reasons.
Okay, thank you. And Jonathan, you're on mute. No, you're not.
Okay. I believe Matt gave me shared capabilities. Okay. Can everyone see the slides okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'll go ahead and get started and be brief. I know there were some delays. I'd like to thank the mayor for giving me the opportunity to present the audit results and Matt for all his hard work in helping us get this audit finished. Just wanted to go through on the reports issued. We issued the basic financial statements. The AUP appropriations limit agreed upon procedures. We issued this year a single audit report due to your federal fund expenditures. And we also issued a letter which will deliver our summary of audit results to provide to the council. As part of the audit this year, our audit opinion this year is unmodified. Unmodified is the highest level of opinion you can receive, meaning we did not have to issue any modifications to our opinion. Some of the changes you'll see to the financial statements this year. Matt has added management's discussion and analysis. On the beginning of the financial statements, you'll see discussion of how the city's year went. You'll also see the addition of some statistical sections in the back of the financial statements that address year-over-year changes in how the city's finances performed. There also is the removal of Avalon Medical Development Corporation. Due to the change in the city's relationship with the hospital, their financial numbers are no longer presented as part of your financial statements. See if I can move this over. Okay. Just to touch base on some of the financial statement highlights of the year, beginning with your statement of net position, also known as your balance sheet. Some of the changes you'll notice there, your total assets decreased by approximately $1 million, or about 2% from year-over-year. Not surprising due to the current environment. Cash saw the biggest decrease, and that was down about $1.4 million year-over-year. Comparing your year-over-year total liabilities, there was an increase of about $932,000 in your government-wide financial statements. And that was mainly due for two reasons. As you'll notice, your net pension liability from the previous year, $9.9 million, increased to about $10.5 million. And your net OPEB liability, your other post-employment benefits, increased from the prior year, $7.7 million, to $8.3 million in the current year. And this is due to the results of actuarial valuations that the city retains from external parties and gets reported into your financial statements. Just to touch upon your net position, overall, due to operating results, your net position did decrease year-over-year. If you do notice in your financial statements, you do have an unrestricted net position. You do generally want this to be a positive number, but do keep in mind, your pension and OPEB liabilities alone make up approximately $18.8 million. So if you were to remove those, you would have a positive unrestricted net position. Comparing that to your general fund, your general fund does show a positive fund balance of approximately $4.5 million. And just to reiterate, your general fund does not show these net pension and OPEB liabilities in the general fund. On the revenue side of things, due to the current environment, COVID-19, and the decrease in visitors to your city, there's a substantial drop in revenues, as you can see here in the audited financial statements. They did come in under budget and substantially less than prior year revenues, just for comparison. Your prior year revenues came in a little over $13 million, and the current year, at June 30, they came in about $9.7 million. On the expense side of things, a little bit of silver lining to the cloud due to mitigation efforts taken by the city. Your expenses did come in about $1.8 million under budget, as you can see here, just comparing actual to your budgeted expenses. Just savings alone and your capital expenditures based on actual dollars spent and what was budgeted resulted in a net savings for the city. I did want to point out a footnote to the City Council. That is footnote 13. It is a going concern footnote. What it does, it describes the effect of COVID-19 on the city of Avalon, on the city of Avalon's finances. And it further describes the city's efforts and measures that you are currently taking to maintain the city's operations. And so due to the downturn in the finances, this is a footnote that has been presented the last couple of years in your financial statements. And again, that is due to the results of the economy due to COVID-19. So at this point, I would like to open it up to any questions for City Council?
Since this is just a presentation, I'm gonna hold all my questions for when it actually comes back on the agenda for discussion and approval. We just received that today, so I'd really like a chance to go through it personally and delve into it before asking any questions, just in fairness for everybody's time.
Yes. Is there a consensus on that one?
Normally, the presentation is given and it doesn't really actually come back for even a receive and file, but certainly we could have it come back. Councilmember Cassidy, if that's what you're asking.
Oh, I believe it'll...
You can always reach out.
Will it come back? It'll come back for a receive and file? Is that what you said?
No, it normally does not. It's just a presentation of the audited financials. And but we can certainly have it come back and Matt or we can have Jonathan Foster back on the phone so he's able to ask any questions if you have some.
Okay. I will address any questions that I have directly with the Finance Director if we're just gonna receive and file the report.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, if there's no questions, Jonathan, we want to thank you very much and want to thank you very much for a complete audit.
Okay, thank you. I'll see everybody soon. Bye-bye.
And it came out pretty well, so that's great. Good news. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Jonathan, for your patience.
Okay. I'm gonna kind of skip around because it's almost 6 o'clock. And Yessenya, did you have anything you wanted to report?
I'm okay right now. I did, of course, want to say thank you again to the city. You guys were a big helping hand with the service, and I don't know if anyone caught video, but it was unforgettable, that's for sure.
Wonderful. Okay. And then we're gonna go down to the consent calendar, so that maybe we can keep Yessenya long enough to do that, and then we'll go back to the other stuff. So consent calendar, Denise?
All right. We have 13 items on the consent calendar this evening. The first one is minutes from the January 5, 2021, regular City Council meeting. The second one is warrants. We're asking you to approve $1,501,336.52 in those are expenditures for December 19, 2020 through January 8 of 2021. We're asking you to adopt the resolution accepting the fiscal year 2021 second quarter treasuries report, and we do have a signed copy from our treasurer. Number four is to approve the request by Swim Run Americas Incorporated to have the city of Avalon sponsor the Latilla Swim Run Catalina 2021 event in the amount of $3,500 for 2021 and $2,000 for 2022. You have a list of renewals for the 2021 waterside permit, and it is recommended that those are renewed. And I just wanted noted for the public that Island Charters is now in good standing, and Catalina SCUBA, DBA SCUBA Instruction and Guides, they're working with the Finance Department to become in good standing, so we're recommending all of them be approved that are on the list.
Scott must have changed chairs.
You got something?
Yeah.
Hello, hello?
Can anyone on the Zoom call hear us?
Hello.
If so, please respond.
Yeah. Anything? I don't think they responded.
Nope.
Nope.
Scott, I've been asking a question.
I think they're talking. Yes.
Hello, can anybody hear us?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
They're speaking to maybe us.
Can you hear me?
Barely.
Cindy's on mute, Michael's on mute.
Can you say something in the microphone?
Yes, I can say a bunch of stuff. Can you? But I don't think anybody can hear me. Nope. Nobody can hear me. Can anybody hear me? Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Barely.
That's okay, at least it's good, better than not. Nothing. Okay.
A little bit. I can make do with it. Hopefully, we can move forward.
Okay, well, I'm right on the mic, so... So we'll just bring this meeting back to order, correct? Okay. Announcements and written communications?
I would like to do the role, Mayor Marshall.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We know they're here. Go ahead.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Here.
Councilmember Ponce?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here. Announcements?
And we also have City Attorney Scott Campbell on the phone.
Okay.
On Zoom. So I would like to go right to the presentation since we've had Jonathan Foster. He is with our auditing firm, Davis &amp; Farr, and he will present the fiscal year 1920 audited financials.
Denise, before we start, may I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to let everyone know, as well as the mayor, I will need to log off at 6:00. I know this wasn't planned, but I will have to log off at 6:00 for personal reasons.
Okay, thank you. And Jonathan, you're on mute. No, you're not.
Okay. I believe Matt gave me shared capabilities. Okay, can everyone see the slides okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'll go ahead and get started and be brief. I know there were some delays. I'd like to thank the mayor for giving me the opportunity to present the audit results and Matt for all his hard work in helping us get this audit finished. Just wanted to go through on the reports issued. We issued the basic financial statements. The AUP appropriations limit agreed upon procedures. We issued this year a single audit report due to your federal fund expenditures. And we also issued a letter which will deliver our summary of audit results to provide to the council. As part of the audit this year, our audit opinion this year is unmodified. Unmodified is the highest level of opinion you can receive, meaning we did not have to issue any modifications to our opinion. Some of the changes you'll see to the financial statements this year. Matt has added management's discussion and analysis. On the beginning of the financial statements, you'll see discussion of how the city's year went. You'll also see the addition of some statistical sections in the back of the financial statements that address year-over-year changes in how the city's finances performed. There also is the removal of Avalon Medical Development Corporation. Due to the change in the city's relationship with the hospital, their financial numbers are no longer presented as part of your financial statements. See if I can move this over. Okay. Just to touch base on some of the financial statement highlights of the year, beginning with your statement of net position, also known as your balance sheet. Some of the changes you'll notice there. Your total assets decreased by approximately $1 million, or about 2% from year-over-year. Not surprising due to the current environment. Cash saw the biggest decrease, and that was down about $1.4 million year-over-year. Comparing your year-over-year total liabilities, there was an increase of about $932,000 in your government-wide financial statements. And that was mainly due for two reasons. As you'll notice, your net pension liability from the previous year, $9.9 million, increased to about $10.5 million. And your net OPEB liability, your other post-employment benefits, increased from the prior year, $7.7 million, to $8.3 million in the current year. And this is due to the results of actuarial evaluations that the city retains from external parties and gets reported into your financial statements. Just to touch upon your net position. Overall, due to operating results, your net position did decrease year-over-year. If you do notice in your financial statements, you do have an unrestricted net position. You do generally want this to be a positive number. But do keep in mind, your pension and OPEB liabilities alone make up approximately $18.8 million. So if you were to remove those, you would have a positive unrestricted net position. Comparing that to your general fund, your general fund does show a positive fund balance of approximately $4.5 million. And just to reiterate, your general fund does not show these net pension and OPEB liabilities in the general fund. On the revenue side of things, due to the current environment, COVID-19, and the decrease in visitors to your city, there's a substantial drop in revenues, as you can see here in the audited financial statements. They did come in under budget and substantially less than prior year revenues, just for comparison. Your prior year revenues came in a little over $13 million, and the current year, at June 30, they came in about $9.7 million. On the expense side of things, a little bit of silver lining to the cloud due to mitigation efforts taken by the city. Your expenses did come in about $1.8 million under budget, as you can see here, just comparing actual to your budgeted expenses. Just savings alone and your capital expenditures based on actual dollars spent and what was budgeted resulted in a net savings for the city. I did want to point out a footnote to the city council. That is footnote 13. It is a going concern footnote. What it does, it describes the effect of COVID-19 on the city of Avalon, on the city of Avalon's finances. And it further describes the city's efforts and measures that you are currently taking to maintain the city's operations. And so due to the downturn in the finances, this is a footnote that has been presented the last couple of years in your financial statements. And again, that is due to the results of the economy due to COVID-19. So at this point, I would like to open it up to any questions for city council.
Since this is just a presentation, I'm going to hold all my questions for when it actually comes back on the agenda for discussion and approval. We just received that today, so I'd really like a chance to go through it personally and delve into it before asking any questions, just in fairness for everybody's time.
Yes. Is there a consensus on that one?
Normally, the presentation is given, and it doesn't really actually come back for even a receive and file, but certainly we could have it come back. Councilmember Cassidy, if that's what you're asking.
Oh, I believe it'll...
You can always reach out.
Will it come back? It'll come back for a receive and file, is that what you said?
No, it normally does not. It's just a presentation of the audited financials. And but we can certainly have it come back. And Matt, or we can have Jonathan Foster back on the phone, so he's able to ask any questions if you have some.
Okay, I will address any questions that I have directly with the finance director if we're just going to receive and file the report.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, if there's no questions, Jonathan, we want to thank you very much. And I want to thank you very much for a complete audit.
Thank you, I'll see everybody soon. Bye-bye.
And it came out pretty well, so that's great. Good news, thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Jonathan, for your patience.
Okay. I'm going to kind of skip around because it's almost 6 o'clock. And Yessenya, did you have anything you wanted to report?
I'm okay right now. I did, of course, want to say thank you again to the city. You guys were a big helping hand with the service, and I don't know if anyone caught video, but it was unforgettable, that's for sure.
Wonderful. Okay. And then we're going to go down to the consent calendar, so that maybe we can keep Yessenya long enough to do that, and then we'll go back to the other stuff. So consent calendar, Denise?
All right, we have 13 items on the consent calendar this evening. The first one is minutes from the January 5, 2021, regular city council meeting. The second one is warrants. We're asking you to approve $1,501,336.52, and those are expenditures for December 19, 2020, through January 8 of 2021. We're asking you to adopt the resolution accepting the fiscal year 2021 second quarter treasuries report, and we do have a signed copy from our treasurer. Number four is to approve the request by the Swim Run Americas Incorporated to have the city of Avalon sponsor the Attila Swim Run Catalina 2021 event in the amount of $3,500 for 2021 and $2,000 for 2022. You have a list of renewals for the 2021 waterside permit, and it is recommended that those are renewed. And I just wanted noted for the public that Island Charters is now in good standing, and Catalina Scuba, DBA Scuba Instruction and Guides, they're working with the finance department to become in good standing. So we're recommending all of them be approved that are on the list with the city, I should say, with the Harbor Masters' recommendation. Then the next eight items, they are all for a waterside project application, and they are Avalon Sport Fishing, Blue Water Adventure, Catalina Custom Charters, Catalina Island Eats Fish and Fanatics, San Diego Sailing Tours, Stevens Island Lead Delivery, West Coast Boat Charters. Seven of those applicants already have an existing boat or dinghy in the harbor. All applicants will be required to pay harbor-related facilities use fees, and that's per section 10-2.402(c). And... I believe that's it for the consent calendar.
Is there anything anybody wanted to pull for discussion? Do we have any ecomments, Michael Palmer?
I have no comments.
Okay. That being said, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve consent calendar items 1 through 13.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. May we have the vote?
Councilmember De La Rosa? Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
And we are removing, in general business, mayor, we are removing item number...
14.
14, which is the Cabrillo Mole Ferry Terminal Revitalization Project Construction Contract Closeout Change Order, and we are anticipating that to be on the first meeting in February.
Great. And now we'll go back to announcements and written communications?
I just have a couple of really quick ones, and it's just to remind the public to please make reservations with the Catalina Express. It really helps them determine which side boat, which size boat to have for distancing on the boat. We did receive several RFPs for the fuel dock, so we're excited. Staff is reviewing those, and we'll be bringing those back for council to make a determination.
Is it fuel dock and/or the cafe, or just the fuel dock?
When we get into the RFPs, not... I can't comment on that yet, Mayor.
Oh, okay, thank you, okay.
And just to remind the public about city hall's hours. Vehicles are every morning from 8 to 12, and in the afternoon is the commuter subsidy, and that's from 1 to 5, and that is reservation only. And that's it for right now.
Okay. Department head reports?
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. Three items we'll report out. City crews are working with Montrose Environmental staff to replace fire hydrants on Marilla near the Aurora Hotel and also on Metropole near the museum. Brief saltwater outages in the areas will be necessary to accomplish this. Also, where city crews are prepped to react to current wind event, also sandbags and sand will be available on South Beach at the south and in its usual location. And then Mole Phase 2, a virtual public meeting, hopefully smoother than tonight, will be held on February 4 to discuss the next phase in the Mole project. This next phase will replace the buildings and provide for a multimodal transportation hub as well as traveler and other amenities. More information can be found at the end of this week on the city's homepage, how all the virtual meetings going to go, and access. Any questions?
I just a question on, and I mentioned it to Denise, I'm sorry. Future curb cuts for handicap accessibility?
We anticipating getting, I have to come, let me report out the next meeting.
Perfect.
Because we did some actions with the CDBG. I want to make sure that everything's lining up for the funds to be available.
Great. Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Greenlaw?
Just wanted to say, Bob, the Mole Phase 1 looks great. We were out there this past week, and it looks wonderful and felt really safe walking with, over the grates with everybody, so, very cool. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Good evening, Captain John Hawking and Captain Joe Badali. If you weren't at the last council meeting, I introduced Joe. He's going to be the new captain when I retire at the end of March, and he's over here now. Basically, he's already been a captain, so he knows what captains have to do on the sheriff's department, but just so he can learn a little more about Avalon. One thing I'd like to bring up is we had a noteworthy arrest yesterday. We had two suspects that came to the island in the, right before Christmas, and they committed a theft. They stole somebody's backpack, and it had their credit cards in it, cell phone, watch, all the personal items. After they left the island with the backpack, they used the credit cards to purchase a variety of items, and we were able to do a thorough investigation and identify them, and they lived out near the city of Hemet, California. We were able to get some deputies from the mainland along with several deputies from Avalon Sheriff's Station, and we served a search warrant out at their house. We were able to recover all the items that they purchased with the stolen credit cards, a TV, a sound system, kids' play areas. We were also able to locate the victim's watch and business card to the city of Avalon, and they couldn't really explain that one. And ultimately, we arrested one of the two suspects. The other suspect was in custody on an unrelated charge, and we're in the process of charging him with the crime also. So it turned out really well. We will go anywhere, you know, that we can to apprehend the criminals if they commit a crime over here in Avalon. Does anybody have any questions for Joe or myself?
I don't have a question, I just wanted to make a comment. I missed my opportunity at the last meeting, but wanted to give a formal welcome to Captain Badali. Welcome to the community formally. I have known you to be interested in this position for several years and appreciate you taking the time and keeping on the effort. Super excited that you're here and excited to transition you into some of the working groups that we have, so, welcome to our community.
Thank you very much, and it's a great honor of mine.
He's a man of few words. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good evening, mayor, council, city staff. Just wanted to quickly update you. This has already been a challenging week. We've been working with our local, state, and federal partners in addition with everything COVID-related, ongoing security concerns, and any threats that are identified to this region, to which right now there are none, and also this wind event that arrived today. So so far, it hasn't proved too problematic, but we're not out of it yet. And I just also wanted to quickly pass along some data. LA County and city fire departments have vaccinated about 75% of their staff, and before the vaccination started, they were right on par with the rest of the county at about an 18% positivity rate. And since their folks have been vaccinated, it's dropped to somewhere around 6%. So it's encouraging. They certainly aren't hanging their hat on it, but it is encouraging that hopefully with the vaccine and the ongoing masks and all the social distancing precautions that it's working, and hopefully will turn a corner soon. With that end of report, unless anyone has any questions.
Counsel? No, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Michael Palmer?
Yeah, I just wanted to update you and the council on a couple of quick things for the planning commission. As many of you know, the new transition from the conditional use permit to the rental scheme, rental license for transient rentals will be taking place effective February 1. As such, at the planning commission level, they're going to be talking about an update on those fees, what that means for the fee schedule moving forward. There's also going to be a discussion tomorrow night on the possibility of implementing recommendations for penalties as well as a minimum number of nights for transient rentals in a calendar year. There's also going to be a revocation hearing that'll take place tomorrow night at the planning commission. They'll be talking about revoking six CUPs that have been found noncompliant, and four have been voluntarily revoked. So just a couple of small items, and then we'll report back to council the following month.
Thank you. I like that report. That's, that's great. Okay, and here comes our finance director and our AV technician.
Good news is it can't go much worse than that, so only up to go from there. And I'll be doing a planning commission tomorrow night, so stay tuned. On behalf of the finance department, I just want to issue a reminder to the public that business licenses were due on the 15th. But if you have not paid for your business license, please do that as soon as possible. It makes it easier for us to monitor that process when they're paid on time. Again, also, dog licenses, if you have not gotten a dog license yet, those were due January 1. So please get those into city hall as soon as possible. Other than that, I'm working on the mid-year budget. If you go to the finance department website, you can see visitor-driven revenues through November. That's probably the last positive report we'll have as far as revenues go for a few months at least. But in the next meeting, we will be providing more detail on what the latest business interruption means to kind of the city's budget and our plan going forward. So there'll be an update, more detail on that in the next meeting.
Great. Any questions of the finance director? Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you, Matt. Okay. Do we have a city manager report?
No, you're not in.
City attorney, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Not tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember report?
I'll go.
Thank you.
I attended Cal City's policy committee meetings on Friday. It was a long Friday. The first meeting was community services, and we set up our scope of work for the year. And then the second, in the afternoon, was the Rev and Taxation Committee. And one of the things that was brought up was a change from the Rev and Taxation Committee's outline of how funding would be reimbursed to cities with emergency funds. There was the idea that large cities got tons of money from the CARES Act, and the small cities got piddly, piddly dip. When they showed the numbers, large cities got roughly $85 per person, per city. Small cities got $12 per person, per city. No city got less than $50,000, which is what we got. So they decided to send this up to change policy that when reimbursement happens, that everyone is reimbursed the same per population, not small city, large city, that it all gets evenly divided per population. So that was the recommendation, and that was voted on and approved unanimously.
That's great.
So there was a little, there was a little, some people didn't think it was right, but they came around, and so we're sending that on, so. That was a good thing about being on revenue and tax. That was, and it's one of the scary committees, the people are a little scary. And some of those people have been there for years, but it was good. It was a good outcome. And that's all.
Good job, and I like piddly dip. Okay. Lisa? Cindy?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Okay. I just want to remind everybody that tomorrow's minutes with the mayor at 4 o'clock, and I do have a couple of special guests, so please be sure to tune in and share. And I would also like to report that I do not have COVID and have not yet had COVID. That seems to be a rumor, so I just thought I would dispel it. Okay. Borough communications. This is an opportunity for people to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken. Anything from you, Michael?
I've received no comments.
Okay. It's, okay. Being that there's no further business unless anybody has a question or wants to say something, meeting's adjourned.